Councillor Rother. There are no. How we do on you, how keep them calm, that will be done on our best to this heaven. Your citizens are the only green and forgive us for trespasses. We forgive those who trespass against us and leave us not with temptation but deliver us to evil. By my speaking and power, we will ever. Amen. Amen. Let's declare the elections for July of the United States of America and deliver all which is changed, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda, entertain a motion to approve the legislative minutes from January 16, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from January 2, 2018, in reference to the release of forest conservation easements.
So moved.
We got a motion and second. Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from January 2, 2018, in reference to airport capital projects.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from January 2, 2018, in reference to the recreation parks and tourism's capital projects.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. And entertain a motion to approve the closed work session minutes from January 2, 2018, in reference to personnel.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any correction? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. The next item we have on the agenda is the certificates of appreciation to the Animal Ordinance Review Committee. As you know, they've been working very hard for quite a while, and we're getting very close to, I think, a product that's going to be great for all the citizens of Wycomico County, the animals of Wycomico County. It's actually our second go at it, I believe. This is a do-over from 2006 or 2008, so we're really getting this where I think it needs to be. All the members of the committee, if you would come to the podium over here, I'm going to read one proclamation, then I'm going to read each of your names. I'm going to hand you the proclamation, but then you're going to have to give it back because Councilman Matt Holloway couldn't be here tonight, and he did not get the opportunity to sign them, and we'd want all council names on the proclamation, certificate of appreciation when you have it. So I'll give it to you before you leave. If you could give it to Mrs. Hurley, would be great. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Good to see you.
I'll read the first proclamation, and they are in alphabetical order, so Mr. Balsamo is first.
All right.
And this is a certificate of appreciation for Aaron T. Balsamo. The Wycomico County Council would like to express its sincere gratitude to Mr. Aaron T. Balsamo for his participation in the Wycomico County Animal Ordinance Review Committee. This committee was formed to protect the animals in Wycomico County and to improve animal welfare. Each committee member was carefully selected by the Wycomico County Council based on their vested interest in the welfare of animals in Wycomico County and served on the committee on a voluntary basis. Mr. Balsamo's dedication to the animals and the citizens of Wycomico County is greatly appreciated, and his time spent as part of the committee was invaluable. Thank you, Mr. Aaron T. Balsamo, for volunteering your time and expertise to serve as a member of the Wycomico County Animal Ordinance Review Committee, done this sixth day of February 2018, signed by all members of the county council. So, there you go. Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you'd like to say anything, you certainly may, but...
I just, yeah. Yeah, I just want to take a minute to thank, not all of them are here, but all the members of the Animal Ordinance Committee that, you know, worked with me on this since July, I think it was. You know, the input was great, the help was great, and couldn't have done it without you guys, so thank you.
The next certificate of appreciation is for Mr. Sean A. Bradley. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next is for Harold J. Sire, Senior. The next certificate of appreciation is for Tony L. Erickson. The next certificate of appreciation is for Kimberly Kilmer. The next certificate of appreciation is for Allison Marine. The next certificate of appreciation is for Linda Mills. The next certificate of appreciation is for Debbie Russ. There you go. Thank you very much. The next certificate of appreciation is for Edna Walls. The next certificate of appreciation is for Crystal Wyman. And the final certificate of appreciation is for Kathy Jo. Williams. We will certainly get these out to you, since you weren't able to make it tonight. Thank you very much. First item on the agenda, Mr. Taylor, good evening.
Good evening. First item, I guess, is very timely. It's a public hearing tonight on legislative bill number 2018-01, an act to repeal the current Chapter 133 of the Wycomico County Code entitled Dogs and Other Animals, and enact a new Chapter 133 titled Animal Control. And I think tonight here for that is Mr. Aaron Balsamo. I would just point out real quickly, this is an entire rewrite of Chapter 133, which was the animal control law, was the common name of it, and this is a public hearing tonight.
At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on legislative bill number 2018-01. If you have any questions or concerns, come to the podium, please, state your name and your county of residence and what those concerns might be. That concludes the public hearing for legislative bill number 2018-01. We will be following up with a work session after the legislative session this evening. Mr. Taylor?
Next, there are two items that are both zoning amendments, and I would say this before I get into either of them. Zoning amendments are done by legislation. They are a little bit different from normal legislation in that somebody applies for either a text change, one of these tonight is a text change, or a rezoning of their property. That then goes to the planning commission, which makes a recommendation, and its recommendation, regardless of whether it's for or against, comes to the county council more or less automatically. So even though these are labeled, both of them introduced by the council president at the request of the county executive, it's true, somebody had to introduce them, but that introduction is essentially an automatic matter under the zoning code. The first is legislative bill number 2018-02, an act to amend Chapter 225 of the Wycomico County Code titled Zoning, Section 225-67, Table of Permitted Uses, and Section 226-108, Retail Sales, to add general merchandise retail sales in commercial buildings not exceeding 10,000 square feet of gross floor area by special exception in the LB-2 Light Business and Residential District. Mr. Jack Lennox is here tonight, I think, for that matter, and it is an introduction, so I think that's all we're doing tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Entertain a motion to introduce legislative bill number 2018-02.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of the introduction of legislative bill number 2018-02, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried. Legislative bill number 2018-02 has been introduced. Mrs. Hurley?
The next step is to have a public hearing on this. If council would like that, we can have it on March the 6th.
March the 6th, okay. Thank you.
The third and last item is also a zoning matter for introduction, again, by the council president at the request of the county executive. It is legislative bill number 2018-03, an act to amend Chapter 225 of the Wycomico County Code titled Zoning, amending the map entitled Wycomico County Official Zoning Map, referred to in Section 225-16, to rezone property consisting of 4.12 acres, more or less, situated in the Salisbury Election District, Wycomico County, Maryland, bounded on the northerly side of Nanokoke Road, westerly side of Kenny Drive, and southerly side of Old Quantico Road. The property is shown and designated on County Tax Map Number 37 as parcel number 66. The property to be rezoned, pardon me, the property is to be rezoned from R8 Residential to LB-2 Light Business and Residential. And again, Mr. Lennox is here tonight on that matter.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Entertain a motion to introduce legislative bill 2018-03.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of the introduction of legislative bill 2018-03, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried. Legislative bill number 2018-03 has been formally introduced.
And if it's okay, we can have a public hearing this evening, which is March the 6th.
All right, sounds good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mrs. Hurley, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. There has been one change to the council agenda, in that there has been a closed work session added to discuss the personnel matter. The updated agenda is on the council table, and it has been posted online.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing on Resolution Number 08, 2018, to remove a forest conservation easement consisting of approximately 2.43 acres, more or less, located along Route 50 and Friendship Road on Tax Map 302, parcel 1033, and a public notice was published in the Daily Times stating that a public hearing would be held this evening. And we have Mr. Tyler Watson here to answer any questions.
This time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution Number 08, 2018. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this resolution, come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution 08, 2018. Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 2000, excuse me, Resolution Number 08, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next we have a public hearing on Resolution Number 09, 2018, amending the Wycomico County 10-year Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan. This is for 2014 through 2024, and a public notice was published in the Daily Times stating that a public hearing would be held this evening. Council did have a prior work session on this, and we have Mr. Weston Young here, Assistant Director of Administration, to answer any questions.
Thank you. This time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution 09, 2018. If you have anything you'd like to state in reference to this resolution, come to the podium, please, state your name and your county of residence and what your concerns That concludes the public hearing on Resolution Number 09, 2018. Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 09, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution, excuse me, Resolution 09, 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Okay, the next item for businesses, Resolution Number 10, 2018, authorizing the county executive to accept a grant award from the governor's office for children in the amount of $24,836. The Wycomico Partnership for Families and Children applied for grant funds to conduct regional training classes. One of those classes is titled Bridges Out of Poverty, and the other is titled Bridges to Sustainable Communities, and we have Lisa Campbell here to answer any questions.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 10, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Campbell? Do you want us to just railroad this through for you?
I don't think so.
Come on now, I'm just, I'm just joking. We're waiting.
Just waiting for you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Please state for the public your name and position.
Lisa Campbell, Director of Local Management Board, Wycomico Partnership for Families and Children.
Great, thanks. So if you could just give us an overview of the grant?
So, this is from the Governor's Office for Children, which is our main funder for the local management boards, and they had $100,000 that they were offering for regional training grants, and I was asked if Wycomico could be the lead, because we would be the only ones eligible, actually, to apply for it, and so we actually are working with Worcester County Local Management Board, and we're going to invite Somerset County Partners as well to train the people that work with our families on understanding poverty and what it is, how to relate to people who work with poverty and understand the framework that will get them to where they need to be, which will be our next piece, which is the Bridges to Sustainable Communities, where we will train up to 100 people in the community, and a lot of those will be community members forming a team and a plan, whether they end up in their community, in their own neighborhood, or it's a whole county, or whatever it may look like, to create a more profitable next generation, and hopefully...
Yeah, exactly, that's what we want to do. Any questions?
Yes. If Wycomico County was the only one eligible, why didn't we get the $100,000?
Only one eligible out of our tri-county area, I'm sorry, out of our tri-county area. There's 24 jurisdictions and only $100,000, so my opinion, $24,000 wasn't too bad, but I understand your point for sure.
Believe me, if that were the case, we would have gotten the whole $100,000, right?
Yes.
We certainly would have. Sounds good to me. I had the same question, though. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 10, 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried, resolution passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Resolution Number 11, 2018, to make an appropriation of funds to Department of Recreation, Parks and Tourism from unanticipated revenue in the amount of $43,800. The unanticipated revenue was money received from the county's insurance carrier from a claim that was filed in 2015 when a pipe broke and flooded the Civic Center, and we have Ms. Pam Olin here, Deputy Director of Recreation, Parks and Tourism.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 11, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Any questions from council, from the council? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
This time, we need, entertain a motion to adjourn from the legislative session so we can convene as the Urban Services Commission.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? We're now convened as the Urban Services Commission. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from December 19, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from January 2, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried, minutes are approved.
Okay, the first resolution before the Urban Services Commission is Resolution Number 01, 2018, which is approving an amended and restated shared facility agreement between Wycomico County, Maryland, Wycomico County Urban Services Commission, and the Village Downriver Condominium Association, and authorizing the county executive to execute the same on behalf of Wycomico County. And the commission has had prior work sessions regarding this document, and before you is the final version.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 01, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Are we going to approve this tonight, or are we going to, what's the process? I mean, do we...
The plan would, the plan would be to approve it tonight.
Have, I mean, do we know that the, you know, people who are affected by this are aware of this?
We did meet with the homeowners, Mr. Taylor and I met with the homeowners earlier in the week, or was it last week?
Thanks.
And had a very lengthy discussion. The developer was there, Mr. Puzi, as was also Mr. Maloney, and I think they went through the whole process of where we were, what the responsibilities were, and how we've ironed everything out.
And they're in the process of doing their turnover from the developer to the condominium unit owners.
So everybody's good, though, with it?
Seems that way. We didn't, we weren't thrown out, and we didn't hear any objections.
We do want to move this, I think, for the benefit of everyone, we do want to move this on as soon as possible, and I do believe that if there were enough people in the meeting, there were about, I'd say, at least 12 to 15 people in the room.
Yeah, I think probably a majority of the owners were there. We didn't do a head count, and they have not had their election of officers yet. I think that's coming up in the very near future.
Worst-case scenario, we'd have to revisit, maybe, and bring it back to make any amendments if necessary, but I don't see, as carefully as we've vetted this over the last six to eight months, I think we have it right where we need it for everybody's benefit.
Were they aware of the meeting tonight?
Well, it's public knowledge.
And we did, we did mention it.
It was mentioned, okay, thanks. Okay. Any other discussion? Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 01, 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried, resolution passes. Thank you for your help, Mr. Taylor, that was a big one.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 02, 2018, to initiate the creation of a urban service district for street lighting in the Kelvinington and Hernan Bailey subdivisions. The commission has received a petition signed by the residents in accordance with Chapter 97-4B of the county code, asking for street lighting in both of those subdivisions. And we have Mr. Dallas Baker here, Director of Public Works, if there are any questions.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 02, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Baker, how are you? If you could step up and give us an overview. We haven't had a work session on this, have we?
No, I'm just, first.
This is a new, this is a new one, isn't it?
Right. So, let everybody know who you are.
Yes, Dallas Baker, Director of Public Works for the county. So we received a petition from the two subdivisions, Kelvinington and then the Hernan Bailey Farm, for street lighting in their area. Per the code, we have to have at least 20 resident, 20 property owners, or 25% of the subdivision sign the petition for street lighting in order to get it forward to council, or to the commission. We compared the signatures on the petition to land records and confirmed that both subdivisions met those requirements, so presenting it now to the commission for your approval, and if you approve it, we will move forward with a preliminary engineering study to determine the costs and potential locations of streetlights in both of those communities.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Baker? Okay, seeing none. Any other questions in general? All those in favor of Resolution 02, 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion is carried, resolution passes. Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Mr. President, would you like for me to coordinate a public hearing on that?
Yes, that would be great. I'm assuming maybe that would be on location?
Sorry, for the, for the district?
Yes.
I believe we have to get the cost, sorry, I believe we have to get the cost estimates together for the study. Once we have the cost and locations, then we have the public hearing to present the findings to everybody.
Okay, so you'll let me know when you have those?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
What was that meeting we had at the Civic Center?
That, that, sorry, that meeting was what I just described, so we'll go, there's two utility companies actually in these, Delmarva Power and Chop Tank Electric, both have portions of these communities. I'll go to them, find out the cost for street lighting, potential locations laid out, then we will present that at the public hearing to the communities, get their input, and then once we have their input, come back again to the commission for final approval before moving forward with any installation.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you.
Can't remember if we approved it, do we approve it?
You did.
Thank you.
The next item is discussion on establishing an Urban Services Commission policy on the non-beneficial use of water. And we have Dawn Parks here, Director of Finance.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you could state your name and title.
Dawn Parks, Director of Finance, Wycomico County.
Great. How are we making out with this?
Well, the last time we met, I made the revisions that you asked for. You had also brought up that you would like to possibly offer to citizens that their Sewer bill is two times the amount instead of the requirement that the city of Salisbury has, so I did a second version with the two times. The one thing with this is we're going on basically the word of the citizen, they would have to show where it was fixed, they would have to give us a history, consumption history, showing where it was flat, it put spiked, came back down, in order for us to know that it got fixed, along with invoices for where it was repaired. So I did try to incorporate that into it to give you two options to review.
Okay. Questions?
And you do have proper repair verification, so the property owner, the homeowner can't just come before us and say, or come before you and say, "Well, I fixed it and I did a good job."
Yes, they would have to bring either an invoice from a plumber, or if someone is able to fix it themselves, I would say that we, you know, instead of forcing them to get a plumber to come do a repair, they can do that if they brought us the invoices from loo's or receipts, that we would be able to accept that, along, like I said, with a consumption history, showing the spike at the time of the invoices or receipts, and it going back to normal consumption afterwards. I think that was the only way that I could possibly incorporate without not having a department to go out and verify the leak and verify that it's been fixed.
Wasn't part of the discussion the last time that, the first phase has to go through whatever the city's requirements are, and that for us to change it, such as making it two times instead of three, we're, it's...
Well, I did the second version, I have an or, so either if, it's an automatic assumption, if the city of Salisbury, it was the three times, and they went through all the steps, where automatically we will adjust our bill as well, or if it's two times, then we'll also look at it. If it's two times, the city of Salisbury won't even look at doing a reduction to the bill, to the water bill.
But we could still follow different guidelines.
We can, with the two, with if it's two times, yes.
I don't think, I think you're going to get into really a slippery slope, for lack of better words, if you leave it up to the account holder to say that they have determined it was a problem. I really think there has to be some bona fide contractor or plumber to state that.
And we can make that a requirement, if the commission would like that. We can, I can make that a requirement, that in order for us to consider a leak that's two times, they do have to have a certified plumber come do the repair, and we see an invoice from, from a plumber, and not themselves.
A licensed contractor.
A licensed contractor.
License, yeah. What, how's everybody else feel about that?
Sounds good to me.
I think that's prudent.
That's, like I said, this is, this was a difficult one, considering we don't have personnel that would go out there and verify. So if you're comfortable with a licensed contractor doing the work and when us viewing the invoice from them, I'll implement that, and we'll bring a resolution in front of you that has both the second version, that has if it's three times and the city of Salisbury reduces theirs, we'll automatically, or if it's two times, they must have verification from a licensed contractor.
Okay. How's everyone feeling?
Good.
Okay, with where we are? All right, if you would, that'd be great, and we'll get into the resolution.
Great.
Thank you.
Can that be on the next, I can have it before the next one?
If the council president agrees to that.
Well, let me ask a question. Would the resolution... Would the resolution itself establish the authority for the Urban Services Commission to grant some type of adjustment? And refer to this document so that this document could be independent or could be changed without having to go through any formal processes and new resolutions? Or would council think that maybe this document itself should be part of the resolution? Do you follow what I'm trying to say? Sometimes when we have addendums to resolutions, we do that so that you don't have to go through a formal process in case finance wants to tweak it. But then again, there are reasons why it's, why we would put it in the resolution as is. To keep kind of like a tight grip on how, how it would be executed.
Well, I mean, if we passed it and it's, and it's an addendum to it, we'd have to change it anyways, wouldn't we?
Well, I say that, but when I, when I, I use the wrong term addendum, others referencing that it would give the authority based on this. You know how we sometimes say based on a handbook?
Yeah.
And the handbook really doesn't have to go through the resolutions, et cetera. How does the council feel about that? Keeping this as part of the resolution or separating the two?
Like as part?
Anybody else? Okay.
As part of the resolution.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. President, that's all I have, is the Urban Services Commission.
Okay. Entertained a motion to adjourn from the Urban Services Commission so that we may reconvene into legislative session as Wycomico County Council. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried. We're now reconvene as the Wycomico County Council. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, please come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence and what your concerns are. Okay, that concludes the public comments, council comments. This time entertain a motion to adjourn so that we can go into open work sessions followed by, oh, hang on a second, I have to read this. Hold on, it's changed now, we have to be very particular. Entertained a motion to adjourn so that we can go into, uh, go from legislative session into open work sessions followed by closed work sessions pursuant to the general provisions, Article, Section three oh five B, one, seven, and fourteen as follows, "To discuss a matter directly related to a negotiating strategy so public discussion does not adversely impact the proposal process, to consult with legal counsel, to protect the attorney-client privilege, and to discuss a personnel matter that relates to the performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction to protect the confidentiality of a specific individual." And we have to read that every time, huh?
I, I missed part of that, will you read it again?
Yeah. Anybody remember where we are? I think that was a motion. Some move, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motions carried, meeting's adjourned. First item on the agenda is the animal ordinance, legislative bill two thousand and eighteen oh one, Mr. Aaron Bolsoamo. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you doing?
Doing well.
So where we're at is a couple of things have changed. At this point, I'd really like input from council. I know there's some concerns out there, so any chance to address them and kind of fine tune the legislation that we're looking at is what I would like to do primarily.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody has any concerns right off the bat.
All right, council? Joe?
When you open up, here it says animal, "An animal of a tame species commonly kept as a pet or livestock, including cats, dogs, cows, fowl, ferrets, horses, or swine." You know, and then further into the law, you know, like the ninety, the thirty-two degree and the ninety degree. I guess my questions are, you know, if you're going to include cows and livestock, and how are you going to enforce all that?
A lot of that would be based off of zoning. I mean, if someone has cows and everything that are being used for livestock purposes, their property is going to be zoned as, I'm not sure of the exact zoning term around here, but it's not going to be as residential more than likely. And a lot of that's officer discretion as well. I mean, you can tell if someone is using the animal for the purposes. I think when we started writing this and communicating back and forth with the lawyer, the issue that we do run into is there are a lot of people that have, you know, potbelly pigs and chickens and goats and things like that, that are there simply for domestic purposes. They're doing no farm work at all whatsoever.
You don't say that in, in your law here, you don't differentiate that.
Yeah, and that's how to word it is the hard part, whether, you know, what exactly needs to be said to define that. Usually with us as of right now, if it comes, if we have an issue with something that the animal seems to be, that it's being used for livestock purposes, we typically will default to the Maryland Department of Agriculture or Department of Natural Resources, depending on the type of animal, to either have them go out and look at it or get their input as well. In the state code, there's already some specificity to mainly horses. It's strictly basically laid down to horses because of the horse racing that does go on in the states and no one wants their, you know, prize-winning million-dollar horse to be taken. So seizing a horse, you have to look at issues like getting a veterinarian to come out and say, yes, the horse is in bad condition. So I mean, there are some state regulations that kind of guide us as to livestock animals.
When you say using the officer's discretion, I mean, that's, that's kind of opening the law up. I mean, I, I'm going to go back about ten years here when we were doing the FEDI law. And when they wrote the law up, a statement in the law was that it would be illegal to have a can of spray paint in a motor vehicle.
Yes.
Okay, and when I questioned that, it said, you know, I was told by the attorney that, well, that's, that'd be up to the lawyer.
Yeah.
I mean, up to the police officer, excuse me. Well, basically, they were making anybody like a surveyor breaking the law by putting that in the law.
Yeah.
So if you put something in the law, you, you've got to either enforce it or not enforce it and not leave it up to the discretion of an officer, I believe.
Yeah, and this with the definition, you know, if we're able to come up with a definition that can differentiate, differentiate between what's classified as domestic and, you know, the line of a horse being someone's pet or the line of someone using horse for livestock purposes on a farm. The main thing we look at just right off the bat comes down to zoning and whether it's residential property or whether it's zoned for farming and commercial use and things like that.
You don't have anything in this about that, though?
No.
You've not stated anything in here about zoning?
No.
Okay.
But I mean, something could easily be out of the, you know, animals that are, you know, livestock animals such as, you know, horses, goats, pigs, cows, et cetera, residing on a property that are zoned for farming are exempt from, you know, I mean.
I'll give you some examples. We'll say horses, if somebody's got three horses and they've got a shelter.
Yes.
And it's ninety-five degrees, the horses would probably be better to be in the, if they've got woods, to be in the forest, it'd be cooler on them than three horses jammed up into a stall.
Yeah.
So when you, when you go trying to make them, keep them in a shelter over, over.
Yeah, and the, the temperature mainly applies to the, to dogs specifically, because that's where, and that's, I, I thought that was in there with just the animals on that, because it's under the tethering.
It's got, it's got everything, you know, your temperature is unsafe weather conditions. It doesn't have anything in about just dogs.
Are you looking at the definitions right now?
Looking at the definitions, yeah.
Yes, because the definition of the unsafe weather conditions, that's just giving what the definition is. It's not saying what I can do about it. The only part that says, in the law that says what can be done about unsafe weather and conditions is tied directly to the tethering of, to dogs.
The tethering.
Yeah. So just going off the definition, I mean, there's nothing saying what's a violation of that. It's just defining it. But then if you go deeper into the law to where the tethering section is, the tethering section does have a line on unsafe weather conditions and the tethering specifically deals with dogs.
So you're saying that the, the definition of what you're going to try to enforce this on as far as cows, ferrets, horses, swine, is nothing, you're not going to try to enforce this on anything other than dogs? Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, because the definition up here, it's just giving the definition of an animal, just like it's just giving the definition of unsafe weather conditions. But in the actual enforcement part outside of the definitions, the enforcement of those unsafe weather conditions is related strictly to the tethering of dogs and those unsafe weather conditions.
Okay. I'm just concerned that, you know, people are going to understand this differently.
Yeah.
And when you put it in there that you're going to be enforcing temperature controls on dogs, I mean, on cows and horses and.
Yeah, and it, it wouldn't be applicable to the livestock animals, even if they are domestic. Now, I mean, if we went out there and we saw an animal, you know, freezing to death in, in obvious distress, then we would take steps, whether it be county or state law or getting a hold of Department of Agriculture. But I mean, that's an extreme situation when an animal is, you can tell it's visibly freezing to death or something along those lines. As far as it's ninety degree, or the ninety-degree thing, if it's ninety-five out and we drive by some horses in a pasture, I'm not going to make a big stink of it, you know, I'm not going to go over there and start a bunch of issues. It's, that pertains strictly to the dogs.
Could we have our attorney maybe draft some language about, I mean, would, would that be something you think you could do about the livestock versus pets issue?
Yeah, I thi- I think it could be, and I was going to say too, I have kind of a general observation that this does seem to be very overbroad. Now, I'm not talking about how it might be enforced, I'm talking about the literal language. And, you know, I do come from an agricultural background. My undergraduate degree happens to be in animal husbandry. So I have some feel for it and I just, to make sure that my recollection was correct, I went and Googled today and found something by one of the extension specialists at College Park on livestock. And I mean, essentially livestock can be left out, and we left ours out to ten, sometimes even below zero.
Yeah, and.
And I mean, it would make little difference, I think, whether it was a pet or not. I mean, they're still essentially the same animal, whether they're a pet or not. I have that kind of a concern. There are also provisions in the ordinance that are a little hard to enforce. For example, if an animal is found running at large, it's supposed to be, if it doesn't have a rabies tag, it's supposed to be held in confinement for three days. I mean, other than dogs and cats, most animals don't have rabies tags. So if you found some hogs running loose, you're probably not going to find rabies tags on them. Are you going to hold them for three days if the owner says, my hogs got out? And they happen to be running at large. So I mean, there's, there's a lot when you look through this, you can see potential problems from looking at it just literally. I'm not talking about how somebody might apply it in a discretion sense because that can vary all over the spectrum. You might have one reading, the next person that comes along in your position might have another way. So I think that those are a couple, it's a long ordinance, I haven't looked at it line by line, but those things kind of jumped out at me. And I think that at least on those two points, they could probably be addressed. There are probably others, if somebody would look at it closely.
Yeah, and that's with, with the stray animals when it comes to pigs and goats and things like that. Almost monthly, every other month, we have a pig or a goat that comes in from a running at-large issue. And as of right now, stray animals have to be held for six days. So this cuts back the time on some of those animals like that without the rabies tag, how long we have to hold them. Typically, animals like that where they're in and out within a day because the owner knows that they're out.
Well, but, but the ordinance says you have to hold them. I mean, I, I'm, I'm not looking at the ordinance now, I'm looking at the one that we're, we're talking about. I mean, why would you if the owner's right there and his, his pigs are loose and they're my pigs? Unfortunately, there was a hole in the fence or whatever, left the gate open. And they don't have rabies tags, you don't want to hold them for three days, I don't think.
No, if.
Probably don't even have the facilities to do it.
Yeah, if, if the owner's there, then we don't take the animals. Like if they're out in the street and we go to try and put a leash around the goat, which we've had to do before, or a pig, and the owner comes out, then basically the animal goes back to him and we give him a notice to, you know, like you said, if there was a hole in the fence, we give them a notice to fix the fence and then we go back within forty-eight hours to make sure that they've made progress on getting that fixed.
Yeah, as I say, I'm not talking about the way it's administered, I'm talking about the way it reads literally. What it literally says is, it, they're to be held for three days. So if you, if you did that, you'd essentially be acting in violation of the ordinance.
Okay, I get what you're saying now.
See what I mean? And in other words, there's a lot, there's a lot in there, I think, that, um, from, from a general perspective, perhaps needs to be addressed.
Okay.
I mean, would it be something so simple as say, would be held for at least three days? And that way you could release them whenever you wanted, right?
Well, I mean, I, I would think that other than dogs and cats, rabies really shouldn't even be a consideration.
No, I said, at least three days. Instead of, you were concerned about the fact that they had to hold it for three days?
Well, yeah, I guess you could, you could say that, but I mean, I'm, I'm also looking at it from the standpoint of which animals have rabies tags. And it really is only just a couple, dogs and cats species.
Okay.
Well, I mean, some of these, some of those concerns, could we have our attorney look that over and point out some of them in case, you know, the law does need to be clarified in that way?
Yeah, definitely, I don't see why not. And I was trying to look up the at-large, because I think even it doesn't say that we have to seize the animal. It may, animal control may seize an animal running at large. I mean, I, again, I'm not a lawyer, but that's, my interpretation of that with the may is that it's not saying if we see the animal out, we absolutely have to take that animal. It's saying that we may take it depending on the circumstance.
I can read you the language. It says, "An animal not wearing a current Wycomico County rabies tag must be confined for at least three days." Now, it does say, unless claimed earlier by the owner, if the animal was not claimed within three days, it will become property of the animal control authority.
Well, yeah, I would, you know, that and some of the other issues would be interesting to at least bring to our attention. We, I mean, I think this is generally a good bill. There may be some tweaks though here and there along those lines to make sure that it's something that's enforceable and something that doesn't, is not overly broad by accident.
I'm not concerned if you make laws and then you say, well, we're not going to enforce them unless we want to.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's so broad. I have another one, Bob, if you, while we're talking about what you'd look over. The liability clause, one thirty-three dash fourteen, the county, the animal control authority, and its officers and employees are immune from liability for accidents, diseases, injuries, or deaths to an animal while being impounded or boarded at the animal control faculty or the faculty designated by the animal control authority has an animal. That basically gives anybody a free rein to do most anything. There's got to be some responsibility somewhere along the line.
Might, might see if Paul has a view on this too, but I, I, I think it would be wise to put in there something like accepting cases of gross negligence. That may be implied in the law anyway, I'm not currently up to date on that particular point, but I think it would be wise to, to say that, that if, obviously if somebody harms an animal due to gross negligence, they're, they ought to be liable for it. I think that's kind of a common sense approach.
Yeah, I mean, as far as the liability goes, I'm up to interpretation, or, you know, input from the lawyers. I really actually think the liability was basically cut and paste from the old ordinance.
That's why we're here.
Exactly.
I have a question that touches on also animal control action. So it says if you take an animal, the owner is, I believe this is for dangerous animals or potentially dangerous animals, that the owner has to pay to board the animal? or potentially dangerous animals, that the owner has to pay to board the animal, you know, reimburse animal control for the boarding of the animal. Then it also talks about then going to, what is it, the, the committee, to the appeals committee?
Yes.
So, if the appeals committee finds animal control was wrong to take the animal, the people don't get their money back for boarding it?
No. I mean, going by the actual definition of the law.
Yeah.
No, because it states that they have to pay for boarding, basically, regardless of whether they win or lose their appeal.
Yeah.
So even if they get their animal back, then technically, by the law written down, they would have to pay those fees.
What would be the impact if we said, if they win the appeal, then they get the money reimbursed to them, so that they're not penalized if they're not found to be in the wrong?
The impact on us, really, it would vary on how long the appeals takes. I've had appeals cases that have gone for roughly about a month or so, and then the longest we had was one that lasted almost a year, just a little over a year. When it's just one animal, it's not that bad, especially if the stay in the shelter isn't long. So I mean, the financial impact wouldn't be that bad, it's, you know, I mean, it would affect us if we, for some reason, took in like six dangerous dogs at once. But it would be a minimal impact, considering that we hold up to and sometimes over forty dogs at one time in the shelter.
All right. Well, I mean, I would, I would like to maybe see that, if the other council's okay with that, see that considered, that if someone wins the appeal against animal control, that they get the money back that they were, you know, that they paid, I mean, essentially, so they're not penalized, you know, for, for winning, you know?
Yeah, and that's, I mean, we've already helped people out when we can, because they're already usually paying lawyers' fees and things like that, on top of having to pay to get their animal out. So, I mean, we already work with people, so that's why I'm saying I don't think the impact would be too hard on us at all.
I think that might be a, a good way to be a little bit more fair to some of the animal owners, but...
Yeah, definitely.
You know, and if you guys are right, the dog is dangerous, then, you know, obviously, then, you know, I mean, it also is a little bit of incentive for you to make sure you're right too.
Exactly.
So, yeah, I mean, if that's, if that's agreeable, then that might be...
Any other opinions on this, Ernie?
I agree with John.
Joe?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I think so too, John, there. Yeah, I, I, I would say so, because it's almost like, well, you're okay, but we're not gonna give you back the money, you know?
Yeah.
I think you have to.
I guess, I guess one thing would be good for us to know is, on a case-by-case basis, how many times has that been done, when the, them board is ruled, no, the dog's not dangerous? It's probably, more than likely, most of the time, it is ruled dangerous, or you wouldn't have had it in the first place, right?
That's correct. Like I said, the whole time I've been here, I think we've only had two that have been And a lot of it was, the reason we were changing this was, by the way the law was written previously, we had no choice but to deem them dangerous, whether it was us or the health department. Now with the changes, it allows more interpretation as to whether you're actually going to deem it dangerous or potentially dangerous. So that will actually, hopefully, still help us keep people safe by having those laws to enforce, while at the same time, giving us the flexibility of, well, is it really a dangerous dog, or can we just deem it potentially dangerous? So hopefully, we won't have as many of those issues coming up as well. But yeah, I'm perfectly fine with the fees being waived for if the case is overturned.
Okay. And I've got some things highlighted here. By the way, I want to thank you guys, I know John gave you the proclamation, I want to thank you guys for all the work on this.
Absolutely, thank you.
Though we don't always agree on everything.
Well, that's the joy of life.
Yeah, that's fine. And, uh, under, let's see where I'm at, 133-12 nuisances. An animal is a danger to a person, and then B, that's A, oh, B says, "An animal to disturb the peace of quiet of a neighborhood with excessive barking, whining, howling, chasing vehicles, attacking other animals." Does that only apply to dogs?
Uh, for the nuisance, I mean, most of the complaints are dogs, but it doesn't strictly limit it to dogs. So I mean, if someone has an outdoor cat, and it's defecating on, you know, if your neighbor had an outdoor cat and it was defecating on your property, then we could file a nuisance on that.
Well, I see, that's C. I guess my question is, I was asked the question when somebody was looking at this, and said, "Well, what about chickens?" And they're talking about roosters crowing, you know, roosters will attack people.
Yeah.
They're off the property, you know? I'm not asking to put that in, I'm just saying, would that be included, though? That, that was their question to me.
The, for what part specifically, then, the...
133, 133-12, the nuisances, B.
Apparently, I'm missing a lot.
Apparently, somebody's had issues with their neighbor's rooster.
Yeah, I know, up towards Delmar, we've had issues with a person with a, with chickens coming into their yard. Every now and then, we get a complaint on a rooster. The main thing, when it comes down to the nuisance citations, is for us to issue one, the neighbor or person complaining has to go on record, and they'll be subpoenaed to the case if it's appealed, to give their testimony on why it's a nuisance, because someone has to be nuisanced under that. I'm not nuisenced by it, because I don't live there, my officers aren't. So, we could write the citation, but it's based upon witness testimony, and the person that is nuisenced has to come in. Because frankly, I'm not gonna have my guys sit outside a house for three, four hours till they're nuisanced by a rooster crowing, when they could be doing other things, and they're more likely just gonna be nuisanceed at making them sit at the same spot for hours on end. So, whenever we do the nuisance one, it's based off witness testimony.
Joe, in that same section, could I interrupt you for a sec?
Yeah, no, I'm done.
If you go down to heat, it talks about, "A nuisance is a female dog in heat outside of a building or other proper enclosure." Someone asked me a question, said, "Well, does that mean they couldn't take their female dog in heat, like, for a walk, for instance?" Should that be clarified to be maybe a, a dog that's out, you know, if it's not under the control, direct control of a person? Except, that sounds like the dog has to be confined the entire time.
Yeah, I, I would say that can definitely be tweaked. I mean, I have no problem with someone, you know, walking their dog if it's in heat, as long as it's under their control.
Yeah.
The issue that a lot of times is looked at, that I've seen in other counties and laws, and different variations about dogs being in heat, is mainly relates to population control, unwanted puppies, things like that. Because it's just the, the domino effect of, someone sells puppies that are unwanted on, or puts them out for free on Craigslist, then they go to puppy mills, dog fighters, things like that. So, that's the main issue with dogs in heat, is the running loose, but...
Yeah, no, and I, I think we all understand how that could probably, you know, be a nuisance.
Yes, I mean, that can definitely be tweaked.
And a couple other concerns, and, and again, these are, these are very minor concerns of the overall bill. I think we all recognize the important work you guys did, you know, you, your whole committee did, and, you know, the fact that, you know, the bigger issues about dogs being left outside and things like that, I don't think are a concern of this. These are just some of the, again, minor things that, that come up, you know, when you change the law, we have to be very careful.
Yeah, and there's always housekeeping that needs to be done, you know, done, eyes crossing the t's, so...
Yeah. But with that being said, the one, the one issue I did have with, with the dog, I think this is specifically dog tethering, was talking about the floor must be raised six inches off the surface of the ground. And my concern is, you know, someone now has a floor that's two inches off the ground, three inches off the ground, I think that's Article seventeen.
It should be just three. It should just be three inches right now.
Yeah, well, I mean, if it's, I mean, and I know, you know, we talked about that before, why you did that, you know, there might be flooding and things like that.
Yeah.
And my concern would be, you know, setting that, setting three inches even, is, you know, a bit of an arbitrary number. Would it be okay, you know, what, what would your opinion be on just having, just maybe just a floor, or something like that, and, you know, so it's not, you know, they're not out there with a tape measure necessarily?
Yeah, well, the reason for the three inches, and this is talking to colleagues of mine in other counties that have a law similar to this, deals mainly with flash flooding. If a rainstorm comes along quickly, and, you know, you're at the grocery store or the gas station, it gives that buffer for rainwater to be able to miss coming into the actual doghouse itself, before you're able to get out to the dog, to get it inside, or, you know, do what you need to do. So that's where that mainly comes from, is, and, and that's not something that my guys are gonna, you know, I wouldn't have the animal control officers out there enforcing that right away to a T. I mean, a lot of these changes, when the officers go out there, it's gonna be education on, you know, these laws have changed, and this is what you need to do, and give people time to fix anything that might have been okay previously. But the three inches really has to do with a lot of the flash flooding and things like that.
Well, I don't know, I mean, I'm not sure if, if others want to keep it, I'm fine with keeping it, if they want to change it, if they, you know, that, I don't know, I guess maybe that's something for other council members to think about. That, to me, that, that hard, you know, number, makes me a little bit concerned with it. I mean, I understand the reason for it too.
Yeah.
It's not worth, it's not a hell of a thing, but, you know, it's, it's something to think about, so...
I keep, I keep going back to the definitions of the animal, and I, and the reason I do is, this is important, because when we talk to Bob, Mr. Taylor, in your opinion, when, when does it become, what's the number between a pet and livestock, safe or foul? That would include chickens or ducks. If somebody's got three chickens or five chickens, you would think they're a pet, but if they got fifty to lay eggs, would that not be a pet, or if they got twelve to lay eggs? So, where, where, where do we draw those lines?
Well, I, I don't think it necessarily comes down to a number. More or less, to me, it comes down to the purpose. I mean, if you have, you know, ten or so chickens, you could consider that to be pets, but like you said, if you have fifty chickens, and, you know, you obviously have a setup for eggs and things like that, the coop is designed for that, then it would obviously be agriculture, and they would fall on their livestock. So, to me, it really doesn't hit whether it's a certain number or not, it hits how they're being used, and what they're being utilized for. You know, somebody could have a bunch of horses, but it might not necessarily fall on their livestock, because are they using them for purposes dealing with agriculture, or are they just a real big horse, horse enthusiast who likes to trail ride and have ten different horses to choose from when they go trail riding?
So, what, what difference does that make? I mean, as far as what, people don't have horses to raise for meat? I mean, they have horses to raise, either breed or ride, or keep them to feed them, as some neighbors that don't ride.
And that's one of the things with putting a number on whether it classifies as livestock, because if you put a number on it, then if you have a certain amount of horses, even though they're all for trail riding, once you hit that number, then are they considered just livestock? And the numbers are what kinda throw me off as far as defining livestock by a certain number of animals.
So you had a lawyer work on this with you?
Yes.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, I've been going through this chapter. Is there anything in here that specifies what areas of the county the animal control authority will have jurisdiction?
Um...
Because you don't want to overlap municipalities have their own animal control, would you?
No, I don't think there's anything in here that I've seen defining what our jurisdiction is. I mean, right now, we go through, you know, we covered the entire county minus Salisbury city limits, because they have their own animal control through Salisbury PD. But, I mean, Willards, Pittsville, Modella Springs, anywhere, we, we cover it.
Should we have some kind of an agreement with those municipalities?
Um, we can, I do believe the only municipalities that there's an agreement with is Delmar, and I want to say Willards, there's something that their town council, or whatever form of government, out there, that they wanted. But I mean, as far as like Pittsfield, Fruitland, there's no broken agreement that I've ever been able to dig up.
That's something to look into.
Yeah.
Does Salisbury have their own animal ordinance?
Yes.
They have their own?
Yep. Yeah, they don't follow the counties, they follow their own.
Do they still use the Humane Society as a drop-off shelter?
Yes. Yeah, they don't have a facility of their own, so they still bring all their animals to, well, they're, they bring their cats and dogs to us, anything domestic.
Is there ever an instance where animal control officers would lure an animal off someone's property?
As far as like if the dog's on someone's property, and saying like, "Oh, come here, boy," to get it off the property?
Yeah. All right, well, I had, apparently, there was an incident a few years ago, when a farmer complained about that, where it happened, where animal control did that. I mean, would it, there be an objection from you to put it in the law, saying that, you know, animal control can't do that, can't lure an animal off someone's property?
I wouldn't have any objection, because I mean, that's how I train my officers anyways.
Yeah, I just wonder if there's a legitimate reason for them to do that.
Yeah, they, they know that, by the law, I tell them if the dog is on the property, like you, I pulled up to your house, your dog's out, it's on your property, okay, it's on your property, how do I know you don't have an invisible fence, or something like that? But I tell them the minute the paw hits the sidewalk of the road and goes off into public property, then technically, it's at large, and that's when you can take it. I've been on calls myself, where I've seen the dog running in the yard, and I'll make sure it has water, and, "See you later, dog," and I just go about my business, so... Yeah, my guys already know that, so if that wants to get thrown in, it's not an issue at all.
And, this is my final concern I had, was them about landlords, is about, so sometimes when you rent property, you have landlords prohibit certain dogs or any pets from being...
Yeah.
So when someone comes to either, you know, get a dog back, or adopt a dog, or anything like that, do they, are landlords, you know, informed? I mean, what, what, how does that work? I mean, do people, you know, do you, or when like a dangerous dog is returned, or, you know, you have these dangerous dog provisions in there, it talks about the homeowner, she'll do this and that.
Yeah.
What if they're tenants at the place? What, how does that work with a landlord? Do you, do you notify them, or do you ask for that information?
Um, well, as far as the dangerous dog, we haven't run into a situation where the person was a renter. If they were a renter, we would call the landlord and let them know, because, I mean, every landlord, their, their insurance policies aren't gonna cover anything that's had a bite anyways. But we still call them to let them know. And as far as adoption out of the shelter, part of the application process is, when you give us your address, we do a property search, make sure the name matches your name, and if it doesn't, and it falls under, you know, some rental management company, then we call them to verify. And if person willingly tells us, "Yeah, this is my landlord's name," we still call to verify that the landlord is okay with having that person adopting a dog. So, we try to keep landlords in the loop as much as possible.
Okay.
Another question?
That's all for me.
Mr. Taylor, what is our timeframe?
Um, the bill was introduced, actually, I believe, two meetings ago, so we have to take action before the first meeting in March, so, ideally, you'd want to vote at the next meeting, February twentieth.
Okay. Well, I think we've had a good discussion here. Do you feel comfortable that there are any adjustments that, that will need to be made? Of course, we haven't heard of everything that Mr. Taylor might suggest as well. How, how detailed do you think this is gonna get between now and the next meeting?
I, I don't know, but can the sixty-day deadline be extended?
It can be.
Yeah, I mean, that might...
It can be, I'm just wondering.
We've already got a law in place, anyway.
I understand, I'm just wondering, and I understand it can be, I just was wondering how close you thought this might be. Two or three to tell?
Yeah, give me a day or two.
Okay, all right.
The...
A couple more questions. Sure, Joe.
On 133-13, the adoption.
Yes.
Is that your entire policy for adopting? Or do you have another policy, more of a policy, for somebody that comes in that wants to adopt an animal, a dog?
Well, out of the Humane Society, I mean, we have our own internal policies and everything as to how we adopt. The adoption section in here, to me, would apply to pet shops and things of that nature. But yeah, we have our own, every animal that comes out of the Humane Society is spayed. Um, but yeah, we have our own, every animal that comes out of the Humane Society is spayed, neutered, microchipped, up to date on all their shots and everything like that.
As far as, I get, I had a complaint from someone that went in, they own a large farm down near Powellville and they said unless they had a dog pen to keep the dog in, they wouldn't let them have the, the dog. And he said, well, I've got a barn that the dog's gonna stay in, or in my house or my pickup, now you gotta have a pen. And that's what they told him, so he went and bought a dog, he was gonna adopt one.
Yeah, um-
So I, I was wondering if there's other policies besides this, just this one section here.
Uh, the, I mean, without seeing the application or knowing the situation specifically, I can't really say, but I know, um, if someone puts on there that it's gonna be an outdoor only dog, then typically, historically, the person has been denied if the dog's gonna be outdoors tied up twenty-four seven. Um-
Now, they didn't state that, they said they had a barn, they had a pickup that he was gonna ride with him and he was gonna stay in the house, but-
Yeah.
He was gonna be an outside, he was gonna be a farm dog.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, without seeing the application, knowing the dog specifically or anything like that, I, I can't tell you.
So if somebody comes in to adopt a dog and they tell you that it's gonna just be an outside dog, not tethered now, but just an outside dog, they're not gonna restrain it, they're gonna let it run on the farm, you wouldn't adopt, let them adopt it?
Um, typically, no, but if it was a farm, then that's a different situation and, you know, that's something that my adoption coordinator will come to me to get approval on.
So it's a case-by-case basis?
Yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's something that historically we would deny this, but my adoption quarter, coordinator thinks that the people are fine and, you know, she looked on the property search and, you know, everything matches up, um, she'll come to me and, you know, say, hey, I don't want to deny this person, but, you know, can I, can, can you give the approval? And I'll look over it and sometimes if I need to, I'll call the person and talk to them and, um, I'll go ahead and approve it usually.
Okay. Alright, Mr. Wilson, thank you very much.
Um, there was-
Yes, go ahead.
One other thing that I wanted to bring up, it was in previous versions, I can't remember exactly where it was, uh, went along with tethering, but one of the members of the committee had noticed it was, uh, dealt with collars. Um, what could and couldn't be used as a collar. Um, and she had noticed the other day that the collar section didn't seem to be in the new, the new drafted legislation. Um, it dealt with not being able to use chains and things like, chains and ropes and things like that as a collar. Um, I mean, it could've easily, there's been so many changes back and forth over the time that could've been accidental deletion. Um, trying to figure out what section it is right now.
The section was one thirty-three seventeen, where there's some reference to collars, one thirty-three seventeen, page eleven on, on the original. But I think you're right, there's, I don't see any mention of-
Yeah, and that's-
In the new document.
Something that was brought up that we think it should still be in there, cause if that gets completely left out, then-
Right.
You're basically stating that it's a free-for-all as to what you can put around your dog's neck.
Okay, um, so you'll make that adjustment?
Yeah, we can, uh, work on getting that adjusted in.
Yeah, it looks like there's a page missing here.
We don't have a seventeen or an eighteen.
Well, there are some pages missing in the work session, if you go back to the original res, uh, introduction.
Page, page eleven on the original.
If you go back to like, um, PDF file twenty-seven as opposed to two fifty-seven, it's all up there.
Neither chains, ropes, nor choke collars shall be accepted as collars for a tethered dog. There must be at least a one-inch space between the dog's neck and the collar. That's basically enough to put your hand in most of the time.
Yeah, um, it's enough to basically, it's not gonna choke the dog. Um, but yeah, some, somewhere along the line, it seems as if that went missing out of the proposed-
Yeah, they struck it, but didn't bring it back.
Yeah, and we'd like to get that added back in, so.
That's good, that's a good point.
And then, I don't know, do you guys have any other suggestions, anything? What's that? Yeah, I just- Are the ropes a tether?
Yeah.
If you want to come up here, you can. Yeah, I think in the old section-
I think in the new one, it has, it's chain has to have, um, swivel on each end, I guess, so that may address it.
Yeah, the old one specifically mentioned, uh, not using ropes, I do believe. Um, and I think that got marked out of the new legislation and that was a concern with some of the members was getting the rope part added back on there. Um, I don't know if you guys have any thoughts on that at all, or?
Ropes will tangle up, ropes will get knotted up.
Yeah, I don't-
Twenty foot to begin with, it might be ten foot before they get done with it.
Exactly, it's more likely to-
So you, you're, yeah, the only, I mean, it's in the definition of tethering, so you're saying you would want to remove the reference to rope?
We'd want it added, I didn't, um-
There is a-
We thought it was, it's, it's included in there still, or?
Under, yeah, under B definition of tethering, tethering means attaching an animal to a stationary object, pulling the run by means of a chain, a rope, tether, cable, or some restraint.
Yes, we'd want rope removed out of that.
You're gonna take it out?
Yeah, take that, definitely, take the rope part out of the definition.
Understood. That was on page twenty-four. Sure.
What's that?
We, they, they had, uh, the question had been asked earlier, um, regarding the authority given to the, um, to the officers out in the field. I, I would look, we, we talked about almost liking it to, um, consulting a professional, for example, zoning with buildings, like, for example, this is a beautiful building, but I couldn't rent this room here to live in. I would, I would consult either an attorney or a, a Realtor and, and I would, I would respect their opinion on that as far as what's a pet and what's, uh, what's livestock or what's, uh, sometimes I think they would have to be, um, given to the, um, you know, or taking the consent or the advice of that officer in the field and making that, making that opinion known. And I don't know if that's something we can add on to make that clearer, uh, in, in the next, um, next review. But I, I, I think it's, most, most of the time, it might be obvious in person, but not obvious on the report written. And that's, that's something that-
So you're saying let the officer decide whether it's a pet or livestock?
When it comes to that, now, if you're talking, now, are, for example, these chickens, are they inside the person's home? Or are they actually treated like, like pets, like in their immediate home or immediate yard, or are they kept in a, an outside fashion, like a, like a barn or like a, or like a coop, like you were talking about? Or if it's a pig, okay, if it's a pot-bellied pig, it probably has access to the house or somewhat, or if it's a, if it's made, it's, it's zoned or it, it's purposes for food or consumption, it's probably in a barn or out, you know, behind a fence. You know, and, and some, again, if it's on a report, it may be hard to, to report that versus, you know, the, the officer actually sees that on the property to make that, that decision and put that in the report. Because just, just to say property is property, but if there's three or four different distinctions, commercial, uh, industrial and residential, unless you specify that, then it's hard to make that decision.
I mean, I think, I think there's obviously some truth to that. Um, I think there do need, there does need to be something in the law that helps the officer, you know, shape that sort of thing, so that's, and, you know, let the public know too, so they're not, you know, um, unclear when they have an officer come to them, but that's, you know, that, that's why we pay Mr., uh, Mr. Taylor over there. Hopefully, he can find something that will, um, uh, he can work his magic and, or his legal writing and find a way to define that to the works, but it still preserves the officer discretion, cause obviously everything, discretion does need to be preserved to a certain extent, but it can't be solely the officer's discretion either, so.
Well, I know, I know, you kept bringing up zoning a while ago, and unless you're in a municipality such as Willards or Pat, Pittsville or Fruitland or Delmar, majority of the rest of the counties vote on zoned agricultural.
Yeah.
So, you know, anybody, you know, with a, even if it's a pot-bellied pig, they say, well, we're in an agricultural area. Or we got ten chickens or five chickens, or say, well, we're in an ag area, so we can, we can have these, you know, whether, so. Maybe you brought that up.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think there's one point worth making too on this, at, at least as far as large animals are concerned. I'm not sure that the pet commercial distinction is, is very meaningful, because essentially, they're, with the exception of the pot-bellied pig that comes inside the house, um, they're all essentially outside animals and it's the same animal physically, whether somebody considers it to be a pet or not. Um, so I think, eh, at least in terms of large animals, it's pretty easy to make a distinction. I think most people consider pets to be small animals that come inside. Um, somewhat of a distinction there. Um, so that's just a, just an observation of mine.
Well, if you, um, I mean, review what we've, what we've gone over tonight, which is good, and, um, Mr. Taylor, I'm, we'll contact you.
Okay.
And then, um, if you put it together, you have a better feel for it, let Mrs. Taylor know what your timeframe might be.
Okay.
We can extend it, but, um, try to see if we can make it within the deadline.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely.
Anything else? Alright.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the, um, open work session, reference to Cedar Hill, the bulkhead project. This is Pam Oland. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Good.
Pam Oland, Deputy Director of Rec Parks and Tourism. Um, basically, as we were going through some records with, um, the state on grants that we had outstanding, it was determined that we had actually been awarded a ninety-nine thousand dollar grant to do repairs on the bulkhead at Cedar Hill that has not been accepted by the county council. And so we're requesting the amendment of the capital improvement plan and, um, to move this project forward so that we can, it would be a hundred percent grant funded, the section that we want to do the work on. And so we're just requesting the council to accept the grant and allow us to start this work in the spring. We actually have a contractor lined up who would be ready to go as soon as this money would be, um, accepted.
Is that why it's dated May twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen?
Yes.
So it's been floating around and nobody's done anything with it?
Yes, it, it, it got, I, it got missed.
Okay.
I apologize.
Surprised you're still here. Cause they said they'll go back to the state if we don't use it.
And again, it was one of those that we have been working with them and making sure our records tie to theirs, and this is one that we realized that has never been accepted.
So you have time to approve it?
Yes, yeah, eh, eh, if, if it, um, can get on the next agenda, we actually, as soon as it's approved, would actually be able to issue the notice to proceed to the vendor and we would be in compliance and be able to use the grant.
Okay, any questions? It's gift, it's, don't look a gift worse than the mouth, don't they say? Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll move forward, no, we need a motion, we're just, we'll move forward with it as, as quickly as we can.
Okay, if I can, eh, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Great, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the, um, the new vendor complaint form, Mr. Rice. How are you tonight?
Good, how about yourself?
Well, I thought everybody in the room was here to discuss, to listen in on your new form.
Fortunately, they're not.
Boy. But thank you for taking the initiative, um, go ahead and, you know, give us a review.
Okay, so my name's Nicholas Rice, I'm the purchasing agent for Vacomico County. Um, the idea behind this, uh, vendor complaint form is to document any issues that we may have with, um-
Just give me one second. Hey, Gary? Gary?
They can't, they can't close the door.
Gary, yeah, you can't close it, but-
They gotta go down the hall.
But you have a badge. Oh, great, okay, good, thanks, go ahead.
Alright, so the idea behind the form is, um, for departments to use this form when we're doing business with a vendor to document any issues that we may have. Um, I, I stress the fact that no matter if it's a big or a small issue, to document it, because then we have written record of issues going forward. Um, the main use of the form is for doing future business with a vendor. Um, if they decide to bid on a project, if it's a formal bid, it's open to, um, all vendors to bid. And if they decide to bid on a project and they turn out to be the lowest bidder, and we have documentation of poor past performance, we have the ability to not award, um, the contract to them based on the documentation that we have. Um, I do stress to the departments, you must have this filled out and have documentation. Just the fact of saying that the last time we did work with them, they, they didn't perform well, um, is not a acceptable form of documentation for poor past performance.
Will you, um, supply a copy of this to the vendor?
The report?
A copy of this, um, vendor complaint report?
So, one of the most important things is, uh, when the department comes to me and says they're having an issue with the vendor, and I give them this form to fill out, I usually let the department start out by working with the vendors to see if they can resolve the issue. If not, then I will step in and I, I tend to find out that when you go higher up in the companies, when you actually get matters resolved. Um, but I don't supply this form itself to the vendor, but I find it important that you let the vendor know that they're having, that we're having issues with them. A lot of times, you'll find out that they don't actually tell the vendors that we're having issues, we're just unhappy with their work that they're performing.
Is this a revision of an existing form?
No, this is a new form.
Complete and full.
Correct.
So, with Paul and Bob sitting in the room, I asked this question, if a vendor knows we have this complaint report and they, um, decide they want to see it, is can they request that through the Public Information Act? They could? In other words, if they're not getting called on or not getting, they're not getting bids and they're wondering why, so they, they can, they can access this?
With, with that said, if we, if we decided to not award to a vendor based on past performance, that would be open right away, because-
Furnish this to them anyway?
I, not the form itself, but this is, what I'm saying is, I mean, we could, we're, it's not saying that we can't. But generally, if I'm not awarding to you and we're, we're awarding to the lowest responsive and responsible vendor, you're gonna want to know why I'm not awarding to you if you were the lowest.
Right.
And I would then say, well, you were deemed non-responsible based on past performance, and I would have to at that point in time supply them with the documentation that we have.
Okay.
So, I mean, with that said, yes, this would be used in that circumstance.
So you're saying they wouldn't have to go through a Public Information Act to get?
No, I would supply them with the reasons why we didn't go with them, other than just, we're not going with you because-
Right, okay.
Absolutely.
Is there any opportunity for the, the vendor to, um, you know, change their ways? And, I mean, this, in a sense, this, this could blackball a vendor for ten years. How do you then know that, oh, by the way, they've changed companies, you know, that whoever it was, was there, is no longer there? So how do you, you set it up?
I would say it would be on a case-by-case basis, because in my, um, in my world, I don't want to use this.
Mm-hmm.
I always want to go with the lowest responsive and responsible vendor, I don't want to have to deem them non-responsible. Um, I've only done it once in my career, so it has to be significant, um, reasons why we're not. And I would say, at that point in time, if, if the department comes to me and says, these are the issues we're having, um, it's done by a case-by-case, but it's not something that if we don't respond, or we don't award to you once, we'll never award to you again. That, I mean, there's no, there's no policy that says how we would go about handling.
So if an RFP, co, if, if this vendor complaint report is filed in January, another RFP comes out in September? I'm assuming this vendor report goes with whoever's reviewing the RFP? This goes to them, it's put on their desk?
The RF, okay, so there's two different-
When the bids come in?
So there's two different ways to evaluate. There's bids which are done by lowest, those are evaluated by me, there's strictly either the, the lowest cost that, I mean, that's the, the main criteria, there's really nothing else. Um, when it comes to RFPs, there's an evaluation committee, and that is then done by, uh, criteria that we put forth in the proposal for the valuation cri, uh, committee to evaluate.
Well, if the vendor doesn't know that he had this problem, this could keep going to the committee time after time, unless someone might say, oh, yeah, he doesn't even own that company anymore. How, how do you get away from it?
Anytime that we're not awarding to somebody based on the, these issues, that would be handled, I mean, that would be told to the vendor. Um, propo, RFPs in general, when we do evaluation, uh- RFPs in general, when we do evaluation criteria, it's not then awarded to just based on low costs. It's awarded based on best value. I do a debriefing with every vendor that's not awarded in those circumstances and tell them why.
Okay.
It's only fair at that point. Either we go with the lowest amount or we're going off of some evaluation criteria. Lowest amount is, it's, it's the lowest amount. And if it's evaluation criteria, I actually sit down with the vendors and explain to them the process and where they fell in those categories.
Okay. Good. Good. Appreciate you taking the initiative.
This, this is a good form, and I think it's very important that we could do add it to the vendors.
Document, document, document. That's the one, I mean.
I'm surprised we haven't been doing it in the past.
Well, I, it's done via email. I mean, if, if we don't have the form, I always say a follow-up and a written. If, if you have a conversation with somebody verbally, always follow up with an email so we have a documented trail. But this at least specifies what we did. They submit it to me. I keep it on file. That way, if someone's calling me and asking me about a vendor and we, we've had issues or, it's just nice to have that, that information readily available.
Good thing.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Very good. Next item on the agenda is the capital improvement budget and program. First step is to review the public safety building. I know we have on here that Crosby and Associates is here. I'm assuming there'll be someone from the county.
They have a presentation.
Okay. How are you?
Thank you.
You can take a seat if you'd like. Well, you can just take a seat here if you'd like. Thanks, sir.
The file has a copy of everything that you'll see this evening and, good evening. I'm Tim Crosby, Crosby and Associates Architects, and we have with us this evening Alan Brock. He's the Director of Architecture and back here is Peter Alexander. He's the Director of our studio. We'll try to, since it's late, we'll try to take as little of your time as, as, as we, we can. As you all are aware, we have been retained to do a feasibility study, master planning for a new public safety facility, which would include the Sheriff's Department and Emergency Services. So we'll try to go through this pretty quickly. See if we get this to work. Our feasibility study is broken into two pieces, Phase One, Phase Two. We're here now because we've completed Phase One. We wanted to report to you all the progress. And, let's see if I can. So yeah, stupid I am. I don't know how to advance this computer. Can you show me how to?
Yeah, let's see.
What, just up and down? Okay, here. So in, in this portion of the work, we went through both facilities, did a very detailed deficiency analysis. And then we developed space programs. You have those. And the programs are really laying out what the needs are for the two facilities. And then we develop an overall building master plan. We wanna stress that both plans you'll see this evening are the master plans. And then we prepare the, the estimate, the first estimated probable construction cost for both facilities. So the next steps after we complete Phase One and move into Phase Two, as you know, design is an iterative process, so we will go back to the original stakeholders that we interviewed in developing this and confirm the design and the layout of the building, adjacencies of spaces with each other, sizes, relationships. What might be inefficient could be improved, what might be deferred could be a future phase. And we'll, we'll work on that and that also will inform, update to our budget. And an important next step, which I know you'll be anxious to see, is what this is gonna look like in terms of verticality. You know, what's the form of the building, the three-dimensional aspects of it. We'll work on that as well.
Is this one building or two buildings?
If I can answer that, you would normally assume that the public safety building would be a single building with two stories. It's not the way it's being done anymore primarily, because when you're mixing, the Sheriff's Department, it has all different levels of security, and then the emergency services facility, which has a whole bunch of other requirements. By the time you look at all of that, it's actually cheaper to build one-story buildings than it is to build two-story buildings, significantly less expensive to do that. I mean, you have hardening issues with a, with a emergency services building that you don't have the same hardening issues. You have vertical circu, I mean, the vertical circulation alone is about $175,000 when you count the stairwells and the elevators. So you'll see on our plan that there are two buildings that are connected. There's a lot of common use that can happen between the two buildings and that's one of the, the great dynamics of, of having them connected but adjacent.
So you're sort of balancing the cost of a second floor with the cost that you may have to be exposed to with more land?
Yeah, and it'll still come out if, in, in this case, what we evaluated is, because we don't know where it's going at this point, but looking at Salisbury, land appropriate for this with public utilities, probably gonna be in the $90,000 to $95,000 range. Whether we're high or low, we don't know, but we think we're probably on the mark. So we take that and then evaluate it in terms of how much more land is actually needed.
$90,000 or $95,000 worth of land?
Yeah, an acre.
An acre?
Per acre, yeah, per acre. And then we balance that against the costs of a one-story versus a two-story building. And it comes out that the one-story buildings, even with the cost of land, is less expensive to build.
How many acres do you need?
9.5 acres.
Almost 10 acres?
Almost 10 acres. A lot of that is not the building footprint you'll see on the master plan, because there's so much ground that has to be used, I mean, just for fleet vehicles, things like that. The buildings don't really take up the majority of the space. It's, it's the parking areas, the driveways, the secured areas in the rear of both buildings. Have a lot of equipment that has to be stored.
And zoning requirements that limit how much of your site can be covered? You know, in, in impervious area.
Right, and we, we use.
Stormwater runoff stuff.
Yeah, I mean, we basically use a, which is pretty standard, I believe, is appropriate in the county, is a maximum impervious surface of 50%. So whatever you come out with in terms of how much parking and buildings you need, you have to double the amount of acres. But we, we think we're right on target at nine and a half. So we wanted to get to the conclusions pretty quickly. Two primary conclusions. The need for a new Sheriff's Department facility is critical and immediate. I don't know if you, if you had the opportunity to go into the facility, spend time there. We do a lot of these facilities and this has significant physical, operational, functional, and security deficiencies that really shouldn't go on much longer. And so we classify it as a, as a critical need and one that needs to be dealt with immediately. In terms of emergency services, the need for a new emergency services building is critical, but it's long-term. It's not something that we think you have to do today or tomorrow. Because the planning of an emergency services facility building, because there's so many things attached to it, towers and fiber optics and things like that. The planning of a facility like that takes a much longer time and is more involved than planning a sheriff's facility. It's something that, first, it's beyond the scope. That, that the planning is beyond the scope of this study. But they are gonna need a new facility. Right now, it's very well managed, very well run. They have lots of challenges within their building, but they're meeting all those challenges today without, without a downgrading of, of their capabilities. Their biggest problem right now is that the EOC, the Emergency Operating Center, is just way too small and.
Well, and it's a, a mock-up, if you will. It's not a designed-for facility as opposed to something, take classrooms and convert them into an EOC is what they do.
But the building's already hardened. I mean, it's in the detention center and they do a very good job with, with managing and running the organization. But you really should start now, because the planning of one of these facilities, for a similar-sized facility as you have, would have here in other counties, it's gonna take you about three years to get through the planning and funding side before you would even start construction. So it's important that, that's the term, critical. So it needs to be done, but it doesn't need to be built today, like the Sheriff's Department really needs to have that. The existing Sheriff's Department consists of about 13,000 square feet of, of space that they use for their offices and training rooms and meeting rooms and the holding cells and lobby and all that. In addition there is a, a sort of a warehouse space on the backside of the building that you may be familiar with, about another 7,000 square feet of which they use. And that's where they have their property and evidence. And then on top of the, because it is a high base space, they have like a mezzanine where they keep long-term storage of records and, and evidence and stuff. But it's not an ideal condition. I mean, that, that space is not conditioned. It's not sprinkled, so there's, you know, if there was a fire, those records would be destroyed. The proposed building, based on, on interview, the whole rank and file, we interviewed almost everybody in the Sheriff's Department and, and got feedback and input about what their needs were, what they had that worked, what they had that didn't work, what they don't have and they need. And we came up, and this is summarized in the spreadsheets or included in the folders, a 29,000 square foot building for the sheriffs compared to the 13 they have now. We have a small outbuilding, well, a smaller outbuilding, it's about half the size, 14,453 square feet, which would be for the variety of vehicles that they have. They could store them indoors and work on them. It would also be where their K-9 and special response teams and quartermaster would be located. It would be a high base space. We would use the same mezzanine concept that they use now to provide that long-term records and evidence storage. But an important part of it is the Sally Port, which is basically a garage or a drive-thru where they would arrive indoors, through a roll-up door, indoors, and then they could safely take prisoners out of the cars directly into the holding areas, which they can't do now. Now they have to escort a prisoner through the building to take him to the holding cell and lock him up. And that's not secure and it's not safe.
So the total program area for the Sheriff's Department then gets to be about, in round numbers, 46,000 square feet?
And there's a really important measure that we use. The International Association Chiefs of Police is really a, a design guidelines that people in our industry use. And based on square feet per sworn officer, and now this is in the main building, what they see is between 300 to 400 square feet per sworn officer. And if you divide, 98 is the number we're using for sworn officers. We're right at 295 square feet. So we're right on the button in terms of checking to see whether or not we have too much space or too little. We think we're, we're right on it. We believe that this program will meet the needs without requiring expansion for at least 15 years.
Liam, are you saying then that there will be two separate buildings?
You'll see on the master plan, Mr. Cannon, if we can, we can just, to answer your question, there will be two buildings, but they'll be connected. And one of the reasons is that the sheriff needs his building today.
Yeah, part, part, second part of that question is, is that in our capital improvement program, there's about, half of it's allotted for, I think it's, let me see. Half of the total, it's about 11 million total, half of that, about 5 million's been allotted for 19 and the other 5 million's been allotted for 20. But that won't be a, an actual true breakdown if you're saying that the emergency services building is going to take much more, much more thought and a longer process. Could that be true?
Yes.
That's just for the Sheriff's Department?
Yeah.
Well, I don't think it is. No, it's, it's all one and the same. Because it says here that the, when we're looking at what we're budgeting for in the capital improvement program, it says, under the Sheriff's Office, it says, this building will also house emergency services. So I'm assuming it's all one and the same.
We can't speak to.
This is the first we've heard that it's gonna be two buildings.
Yeah, and this is the first opportunity we've had to, to go over that with you.
Sure.
And, because this is our first reporting to Mr. Culver as well as it is to reporting to you, so.
Okay.
And I can't speak to the allocation of the capital budget. What we can tell you is what our preliminary numbers show. Now remember too, that in this first phase, these, the numbers that we're giving you are based on prevailing costs per square foot predominantly for buildings of a similar type. Our numbers are very accurate because our projects are very recent. I mean, we just finished Berlin and Berlin came in at $323 a square foot. And so our square foot numbers that we're projecting out, because we're two years out in terms of when all of the building would be completed, so. And, and for the space needs in, in terms of the emergency services, you'll see that their current facility is approximately 7,500 square feet, second floor of the detention center. The programming with the emergency services staff shows that the main building would be approximately 20,200, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, should've done that. 20,000 square feet. The outbuilding, which they need, they need to be a space within the outbuilding, is another 3,780 square feet. Total program area is 24,051 square feet. Now let me refer back to case studies. We use case studies an awfully lot, a, a good bit for research. Other 911 emergency services buildings for counties of this size run between 18,000 square feet and 20,000 square feet. So we're, the second part of our study where we vet it and, and come back and look at it, we think that, that we'll go back towards, more towards that 18,000 to 20,000 square feet. Okay, do you want me to bring the board up? Yeah, why don't you do that, why don't you do that. Peter, can we bring up the board and we'll just hold it here? Let's real quickly just show the overall, I think it's, it's good to show the overall plan.
This is for the emergency services.
So this gives you what the, the concept for the building is. This is the sheriff's building right here, and then this is emergency services right here. And then this is the back maintenance building in the back. So let's look at the Sheriff's Department building first. Peter, I can take a look? So the Sheriff's Department, again, you can see it's connected right here with the emergency services building. Again, 29,000 square feet to here. This is all of the, the operational area for the Sheriff's Department, including all the records. This is where all the personnel will work, the evidence storage, dispatch, and the other areas that are part of the program. This is the connector. That's the Sally Port right here. It's a dual-drive Sally Port. Connected to that is, is K-9, because we need an area for K-9 to be able to pull into the building, be able to, to take care of the animals. And then this upper portion shows you the portion of the rear building. And this is really more of a pre-engineered steel building, that is where they'll park their vehicles, the service vehicles. And it's also where they'll do investigations when it. And it's also where they'll do investigations when it involves automobiles, which they really don't have the space to do now. And then in the center portion, right here, is where the Special Response Team, the Quartermaster and the Armory, and then the long-term upper storage on the mezzanine.
Sir?
Yes, sir.
Bob, or Wayne, you're in the audience. There was some talk early in this process that the state might do a DNA lab in here. Is that moving in any direction, or?
Getting a little track, I spoke to them last week, the state, the state address, so, we're still talking.
Okay.
Nothing yet. They wouldn't own the building, they wouldn't be building a building, we would do that, at least to the state.
So, it wouldn't be included in this building, no? I thought that was the talk to begin with, that it might be included.
It was, and not exactly how many square feet they would need. And I guess I'm kind of doubting the AOC needs that many square feet.
Okay.
So, they've got six thousand now, they're planning to have twenty-something thousand, so, there's a lot of negotiation.
I see.
Yeah, and that's the second part of the study. I mean, generally speaking, the buildings are the biggest and the most costly in the first phase of it. And then when you really drill down, there are two things that we'll do in that second phase, is really to vet it. We have a lot of experience. We can say, "Do you really, do you honestly need that?" The other is, is being able to phase the building. We're confident that most time, it's not inflated. And, and I can tell you from the work we've done so far with both agencies, I don't think anyone's tried to gild the lily, but budgets are real. And our job is to try to come back and see how we can get them the best building they can get for the lowest possible price, so. Okay, Peter, let's, let's move on. So, these next slides are just showing you blowups of portions of the building. We'll get through this pretty quickly. This is the rear of the building. To the left of all the personnel, because we have CID, we've got patrol, there is a lot of different levels and departments that are involved with the sheriff. And then this is the blowup of the rear part of the building. So, let's talk about emergency services. Alan, I believe we're on...
Well?
Yep. So, the emergency services building, Peter, you wanna grab that, come back? Yeah. So, there are really, as you all are aware, there are three main components to the emergency services building. First is nine-one-one, and the support staff and facilities that are part of that. The second is, and the largest space user is the AOC, Emergency Operations Center. And it has a whole lot of attendant pieces with it, breakout rooms, classrooms, very large bathroom and shower facilities, because if there's an emergency, there's normally the need to have that. The same way with bunk rooms. So, all of that is built in. And again, when we go back to that vetting process, we'll look at, okay, how can we reduce the amount of space or so? You know, bring it, so it's still operational. I mean, these are very expensive facilities. There are, most of this is all raised floor throughout the building to be able to get the technology in. On average, these facilities are costing today, not counting all of the stuff that has to go on outside, you know, the additional tower that would be required for this one, all the fiber optics, all of those other costs, which, in a lot of cases, the numbers board, if you're all familiar, will help pay the cost of that. But these are running anywhere from four hundred and fifty dollars a square foot to five hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot to build. So, they are probably one of the most expensive facilities that you'll have to deal with in the future. So, those are the components. This is the connector here. The idea here is, is that the sheriff, as you all know, does a tremendous amount of training. Training saves lives. And with this facility here, the EOC, which most of the time, with the exception of training, is probably used four times a year, is, is set up to be a tremendous training facility, and that would be able to have the sheriff across, use that, and not have to build another training piece. Okay. So, these are just blowups of the, of the space. This is the, go ahead, Peter. So, this is the EOC space. You can see the classrooms, the EOC center, and then all the mechanical, electrical, technology pieces that come along with it. And this is the nine-one-one. We'll try to get through this just a little quicker. So, here is, and we have a print of this in your, your plan. This is the site master plan. You'll notice that entering the site, there's a rotary. And everybody goes, "Oh, my gosh, why do you have a rotary at the front of your building?" It's a security tool. It prevents high-speed entry into the site and potentially entering the building. It's something that's used more and more often in secured facilities, just because of what's been happening in the, in the country. So, the buildings in orange are the sheriff, the buildings in green are the public safety. You can see that there's a circuited route around the building to be able to get in and out, sometimes at high speed. We'll blow this up a little bit. You can see here is the, the entry, the rotary. We have two entrance, one entrance and an exit around the site. You always need to have two ways in and out of a site with a public safety building, in case one of them happens to be blocked. So, this slide shows you the buildings themselves, and then we'll get to the last part, which shows you the rear of the site. And you can see here that all of that in the back, it has a lot of impervious surface that is in building, because we have to have parking, secured parking, and this is all fenced, and it's secured, anti-flying fence. And then areas for fleet, and then circuiting back out of the building. All of the employee parking for both buildings are behind gates and secured. One of the biggest problems with the current facility, sitting right next to the detention center, it has no perimeter security. Police vehicles are parked out front. It's just not the kind of facility that you want to have.
Specific example, the Special Response Team getting ready to go out on an assignment or a mission, doesn't have a place where they can stage, prepare themselves, their equipment, do a briefing, and then get into the vehicles without being observed where they are now. And there's people coming to visit the jail, there's people in the jail, send the cellphone call to say, "Hey, something's going on," you know, "can alert somebody outside." So, that's also an important consideration with having the security backside of the property.
And just to let you know what they're doing now with, with SRT personnel or, or, you know, others that happen to be working undercover, the criminals are actually staying outside the facilities and trying to, to look at the people and the cars that the undercover officers are using. And so, if they don't have someplace secure and inside to be able to do that, before long, the bad guys know who they are, what they drive, and their job is a whole lot less effective. So, and that's becoming more and more regular throughout the, throughout the public safety world.
And more dangerous.
And more, it is more dangerous. So, next, I guess we're gonna get to a part that is of interest. Alan, you wanna grab this?
Well, Tim gave you a couple of pieces of information earlier. With our recent experience, say related to three hundred and twenty-six dollars a square foot, it's a ten thousand square foot building, we are using a number of three hundred and forty thousand, I'm sorry, three hundred and forty dollars a square foot, which applied to the main building, gives you a nine-point-nine million-dollar estimate, budget cost. The outbuilding, which is the vehicle building, which Tim mentioned, could be a steel, pre-engineered steel-type building. We have a cheaper dollar per square foot, but of a hundred and seventy-five, which adds another two and a half million. The training, if we only have the EOC portion of that emergency services wing built, so that it could be used as training by the county and the Sheriff's Department, it is a technology space, so we're using the three hundred and forty dollars a square foot. Adds another eight hundred thousand. Total construction cost of thirteen-point-two million. You would have a contingency allowance in your budget, which adds another, almost seven hundred thousand. The total cost of this is thirteen-point-nine. Now, we average that out to three hundred and two dollars and fifty cents a square foot, given the size of the facility. Tim also mentioned earlier, the International Association of Chiefs of Police, they have a, in their standard average, three to four hundred square feet per sworn officer. He talked about that, which brought us to two ninety-seven. I mentioned earlier that every time we do an iteration of this process in Phase Two, as we vet, and all the way into construction documents, as we develop the detail of the building, we always bring the cost estimate along with it, so we don't, you know, this isn't the last time that we will go through and do the cost estimating process.
And the, in the second phase, the costs are much more detailed. So, instead of being based on a square footage cost, we take, we use, I'm sure you all are familiar, the CSI, Construction Specification Institute, we break things down at least into sixteen pieces. And then based on our past projects and our databases, we project out each, what each one of those sixteen costs are. All right, last, and we'll talk about emergency services, if I can get that up. The main building is at twenty thousand two hundred and seventy-one square feet. We have that at three hundred and fifty dollars per square foot, seven million one hundred thousand. The outbuilding, six sixty-one. This is a startling number, but a very true one. When you look at IT, security, and FFNE, it runs about a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, which would add another three million to the project. So, the total cost that we're projecting is eleven million, three thirty-six, eight fifty, or an average cost of four seventy-one thirty-six. What's in question, I think, is the square footage, and we'll get to that right number in the second phase of the feasibility study. But we're right on target with where, what we think it's gonna cost. One thing we do have to tell you is, is that in most facilities, you're gonna wind up with about seventy-five percent of the cost of the basic building in additional costs that are not attributed to the building itself. Towers, fiber optics, all of those connectivity issues that wherever you're gonna put the public safety building, you're gonna have to deal with. Thankfully, most of that money is covered by other sources. So, with that, we want to thank you for your time. We will be back. We're just now entering into the second piece of this. We'll, we sit down with both agencies and vet everything, and we'll come back and update you and be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Questions? I guess what I would ask, first of all, is, I mean, you were hired to do the feasibility study, the planning and the study, et cetera. What was your specific charge, and under what expectations for the budget on this project?
Great question. Our proposal's very clear. The services that we're providing are what's outlined in here, is that when we're finished, we are to have a master plan for the Sheriff's Department, and it's great. You can see the level of detail that we're going to in this early stage. Have the same thing for the emergency services building, have the same thing for the site. Also, a very detailed estimate of cost for those buildings. Now, the question that you're asking, I think underlying question is, did we know that the, the budget was ten million dollars? Yes, we did. Our job is to tell you what reality is. And so, if we don't agree that the ten million dollars is the right number, now, in the second part of this, that charge is, is saying, "How close can you get? By what means can you get it close to the money we have allocated?" Budgets are always limited. And that's our job then.
The reason I ask is because you, you have limited resources as well, and I'm certain that for whatever, whatever it is that we've hired you to draw these conclusions, we would want to make sure that you were operating as efficiently as possible, based on the information that we've given you. Point being, this is obviously, I mean, this is a lot of really excellent work here, but you've done excellent work on two separate buildings with a budget of probably a total of twenty-five million, when originally, what's been approved, at least by this council, has been an eleven-million-dollar project for Sheriff's Department. So, I'm concerned that what we, what we've charged you with doing, and what, of course, we've paid you to do, and what you're spending every day doing, half of your time may be wasted if it isn't even feasible for this county to afford it.
Well, it's a great comment, but our job is, is most importantly to say, what do the agencies need in a facility to do their job? And we believe we've spelled that out here. So, I really can't speak to the, to the issue of it's eleven million dollars. We know that we were charged in our contract to develop a master plan for the needs for both facilities, to show a plan specifically for that, based on those needs, and then to give an estimate for the cost. Wish I could give a better explanation, but that's what our contract says we are to do, and we're doing it.
So, you mentioned Berlin a while ago. What was the estimated cost of that? And are you, are you finished with that project?
Having the ribbon cutting, Friday.
Okay. Did it come in above, below?
No, wait, when it came back from bid, it came four percent below what our estimates were. Total amount of change orders during the course of the project was three-point-five percent of the total cost of the project. Of that three-point-five percent in change orders, eighty-five percent of those change orders were due to owner-requested changes. Only fifteen percent of the three-point-five percent were due to omissions or things that were not as well shown on the drawings as they possibly could.
No, and some hidden conditions.
And hidden conditions. So, we think that's a pretty good record. And the same thing, same kind of things were at Herlock, which we just finished also, so, we're pretty accurate. We have a very good contractor.
When you mentioned it's essential that the Sheriff's Office be built first, and then the nine-one-one center emergency management later, would it be in the plans to do the Sheriff's Office all at one time, get it done, and not do the nine-one-one center until later? Is that being considered, or has it all gotta be one project done at one time, or?
Well, that, that, again, is a great question, and my apologies for not being clear. The Sheriff's Department, if they could walk into that building today, it would not be too soon. That's, I mean, we've seen a lot of these facilities, and the current one is very substandard. If you could do both of them at the same time, of course. The problem is, is that the planning cycle for an emergency services building is long to do it right. So, if all that planning was done, then, of course, it's always better to do the both at the same time. There's these economies of scale.
So, they can be done separate, though?
Oh, yes. The way this plan is laid out. Now, if it were a two-story building, you couldn't do it that way. That's one of the other reasons, is with the anticipation of being able to phase it.
Do you, the buildings like in Berlin and Herlock you mentioned, are they built with general contractors, or they, do you use a construction manager?
Actually, they are, they, they, they're bid, same way we're doing the new Caroline County Sheriff's Department. And they will all be competitively bid. We had, we've been very lucky. We had a, not lucky. We had a great contractor on Herlock that was Harper and Sons. And a fantastic contractor on Berlin, that was Willow. And we had a lot of very good activity in the bid process for both.
This is a general question.
Yes.
Do you like the general contractor form better than the construction manager form personally?
No.
You like the construction manager?
How we like to, to do things is that we like to get the contractor... How we like to do things is that we like to get the contractor in, the same day we start, we want the construction manager there too, because I think the client deserves to have all of the people that have knowledge about the building, starting at the same time. Makes it more difficult for an architect, because you have someone sitting there saying, "Well, why the heck are you doing that? That doesn't make a whole lot of sense." But that's been our history.
We've used the construction manager form for our schools for a number of years.
Yeah, it really works, it really does. It's our front.
It's a real advantage to the project to have the construction input during the design phase, no question.
Because we're, we happen to be old architects, so we can say this, architects sometimes make errors in judgment, and especially when it comes to budget, so it's better to have the people that know everything about the budget, starting at the same time the architect does.
I'm hoping you made an error here.
That's just our opinion, I'm sorry.
I'm hoping you made a big error here.
We're fine, 30,000, you know, we're up here. And I do, I do want you to know, I don't think we've made an error.
No, I'm just, I was just kidding.
And it's important, I think that this is out on the table, is that when you're looking at the facilities that are best suited for these agencies, I think we got it right. That doesn't mean that you guys can't say, "Well, look, we don't have the money, do the best you can." We do that all the time, I mean, this is not an unlimited world, and that's why this next phase is so terribly important, because we go back and we go, "Hey, look," you know, "got to get this in."
I'm not speaking for the rest of the council, I think I know, I think we know the need, especially for the sheriff's office, I think that's been pretty relevant.
Thank you for the questions. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Well, we want to thank you. This is one of many times we're.
Thanks very much.
Very much. We will take a five-minute recess, give PAC 14 time to change the tape, if we could, thank you.